So there's no special presentations tonight. Dr. Cortez, you have the super technical.
We have our boundaries of respect and education committee, boundaries of respect and education committee, public presentation, Dr. Singer, I heard you seven PM, March 10th. Mark your calendars for that, it would be great to have a few board members present for that. We already put it out on social media Friday folder, it'll go in emails, it will, and also is posted on the website, two locations. Try to get that, you know, on the website. And if you can mark your calendar, it's in my report, if you don't mark it, where I always put a couple of events. Thanks, Mrs. Wagner, Lakeview, lead graduations February 29th at nine AM, that's late. Now, River View starts when Lakeview is over, so that's why they don't tell everyone. But once we find out, we will let you know. Thank you, that's my comment.
Just an update on the kindergarten registration, we have eighteen unassigned flex students, fifty-eight Lakeview, fifty-one River View, and twenty-one unassigned pre- K, which is a total of one hundred and forty-eight students. If I compare that to this time last year, we had a hundred and twenty-seven registered, and I just subtracted twenty-one, and if I didn't count the pre- K, which I didn't at this time last year, we would have exactly one hundred and twenty-seven. So it's the same amount, we have three weeks in last year. Screeners will be our nightly presentation on January 29th at Value at six thirty. We already have about ninety confirmed, so I'm hoping you'd like to come to join us at Value on Wednesday. And thank you to all of our outside presenters for Math Matters, we still have many that are scheduled to come in over the next few months. But as of now, we have already had seventy-three outside presenters come to our schools and share their expertise, so we are very appreciative of their time in helping our students, thank you. It's good, it was the super technical.
Let me just add a little bit of mine, because I happened to see one of your Math Matters presentations by two parents. A husband-wife team came in to the fourth grade at River View, and I, that was amazing. The mom was a teacher, a math teacher, and the dad was a contractor. So they were talking about how important math is from the contractor's point of view, not just like business side, but interested in how you could apply some of the mathematical concepts to figure out the equations and all that. I thought it was great, so, yeah.
Someone that I've seen are good.
It's great to see me at that meeting already, too.
Thank you, Dr. Paul, it's Dr. Cortez. To Math, business administrator comments?
Just a reminder to anybody who has not completed their ethics disclosure questionnaire, an email was sent to your email address a few weeks ago, please complete it and we'll go over it and send it on the way. Thank you.
Thank you. It is seven thirty-six, I'd like to open the, open the meeting to the public for any questions or discussion. No one, no one in the audience, so you can close it at seven thirty-six and move on to old business. Mr. Paul, would you move us through all the things, please?
Sure. There are no objections, I approve to approve following resolutions under all business. A, we have the treasurer of school monies to have recorded for secretary reports. B, education reports, the report of students involved for December 2019. The report of the health office for December 2019, and H I P K's be O four. And finally, C, the minutes from our work, regular section being executive section from December ninth. All right.
Call on David.
All right. Call on Paul.
Call on Paul, thanks.
Call on Paul, please.
Mr. Kim, sorry, Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lour?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Putting on to new business, actually containing, like, would you move this through personnel?
Sure, there are no objections, I would like to move items N through eleven is a block, include a bunch of catch-ups, vacations, as well as a bunch of additions, since our last meeting, which was a while ago, three weeks ago, so. Additional additions, some teachers for family law leave act, leave of absence, a bunch of different things, as well as, we have one student to observe and three who substitute. Oh, and I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Miller, for pointing out, there is an additional item on the addendum to be added to number one, which adds N through Q. All right.
Anybody have any questions?
Just congratulations to Ms. Thaks for who crossed the line, A A certification.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations, I missed that, maybe I should read for. That's your work with relations, you signed it up and put it into the contract the last time? That's great.
Call on Paul.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lour?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
And Swatner?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould, would you mind moving after instructions in order?
Sure, if there are no objec, if there are no objections, either item one and two together to be voted on, approving the attached list of field trip requests, and the list of workshops expenses A through E for some training and different trainings, some different training opportunities.
Second? Thank you. Is that, is that like a train to trainer, will that teacher be going and then coming back for any information to other teachers?
That is not, that is one week, that's the cost of one week training, so nature, means the order of dealing now for the position. It's the same program that we said in the summer, or those who gone through the two-year programs, with the full program at Fairland Dickinson?
Okay. Thank you.
Can I please note that that item, letter E, should note type, that is paid for through type of funding?
Call on Paul. Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lour?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
There are no policy revisions, so moving on to the finance, Mr. Cass, would you move us through finance?
Sure. Yeah, six items to move under finance. Number one, there's our check register, the milk fund term expenses, general organization, and elementary enrichment. Number two, that the board approved additional occupational therapy services with PJ Chambers for the two thousand IT code, two thousand twenty school year at a cost of fifteen thousand dollars. Number three, that we accept the donation of fifty-five dollars to the Value French Club for a nets from the Forte event. Number four is to accept the foundation of dental donations as listed below. Number five, that we approve the agreement with Fallon Orbit, speech therapist to provide a feeding evaluation and feeding therapy for student two oh two six seven eight three, at a cost not to exceed two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Item number six is to approve funds for the Value twenty twenty field trips from the Value PTA at thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the cost for the students. Second?
So, Dr. Forte, can you, or Dr. Forte, can you explain the B and A donation?
So, yes, the, the teacher, it's a, it's a cultural experience for this club, and they put it in a grant, grant denied by the, by the foundation, I think we discussed the foundation's issue, I discussed it with the foundation, with the president, also with Mr. Anderson, and, but I did tell the teacher if the grant did get funded, but he not have funded myself, because I thought it was a denial exercise for that. And just so you know, over the years since I've been here, we have two camps, one is the Yankees camp. Yankees camp money comes into the district, but the second camp, the, the Giants camp, is, is, it generates about a thousand dollars of donation, and since I've been here, that thousand dollars a year is going into the foundation. And when I first originally did it, I, I told them with the stipulation that it go toward extracurricular athletics, things like that. So I asked them if they would consider these things in the future, because we've donated, I've gotten about six or seven thousand dollars in donations, and we're going to use about fifteen hundred for the, for the signings of banners and the gym and the all of you that say like championships. So in the interim, while that's getting squared away, I didn't want them to miss out on their, on their activities, so that was it.
It should also be noted, under item number six, the donation from Value PTA, one of several tracks, is that right?
Uh, they do a series of different checks throughout the quarter, to remind yourself, this will be the total of the donation. Do you further advise of, of, of Washington?
Yes, I'm going to bring it around, and A, sir?
And let's make sure we're all aware that that primarily comes from our lunch program, and considering the fact that we're now at the point where we may have to offer a lunch program and not have a PTA lunch program, it's just something we need to be concerned with going down the road.
Could you clarify, might I say, are these PTA funds that we're overseeing, or is this funds from, are the districts?
No, we don't oversee it, they, they, the PTA, so they go on three large field trips, like more involved than a typical, you know, going to Turbaxo. They go to, they go to Monksu, they go to Washington, we see for three days, the cost of the trips is a lot higher. To defray the cost for the kids, so that they don't have to pay, the Washington, the trip is about five hundred and fifty dollars. So they defray the cost by donating, say, a hundred and fifty dollars a kid, so now the parents only have to pay four hundred. They don't, they don't, they don't control the money, they just donate to us, and then, and that allows the school to charge less to each kid.
Okay, so the, the money is coming from the PTA, or, I just want to clarify.
Correct, what it, what it, how it should take, and I approve funds to be donated by?
Yeah, or donation received, or something, the language is slightly.
It's a little fuzzy, they don't know where it's coming from.
That was the original main question I thought, so, I, I.
So instead of, you were just saying donation.
Yeah.
Why do you say, why do you say elsewhere?
And just since we brought it up, Dr. Cortez, and that how all the PTA monies were to, from each PTA goes back to the schools, they donate to comp, for the cost of all the field trips?
The, the other field trips aren't super expensive, probably, you know, if it's, maybe a trip is forty dollars, we'd be able to pay twenty, but the ones that are five fifty, you know, if there's no more money coming in from donations, we'll be expected, if we continue the trips and continue the way it would be going, we would expect parents to pay at all number. We do get scholarships, that's not, we can start, it's just that the other kids, the majority of the kids have to pay, a lot of the pay more. I think it's pretty nice that we have forty thousand plus thirteen, so about fifty-three thousand dollars donation on agenda. Pretty good, pretty good number of donations.
I have a, I have a question about number five. What is a feeding evaluation and feeding therapy, and why is the speech therapist the one providing it?
A feeding therapist looks at, it's really a sensory issue, and that's, and a speech therapist is trained to do it, a sensory issue, that a student has difficulty chewing its own based upon sensory issues, and so we come to do the evaluation, to see what the issue is, and there is a whole treatment, procedure, how they go forward to eventually make the student, it's a, so.
Thank you.
I have one other question, item four, I was just curious, does the foundation of Denville, does they give a project for funding, or was that just?
No, so what happens is, they have a pool of money, and they put it out to the staff to write grants, the grants are, the grants go through a process of approval. And the, the, our internal process between, sometimes Dr. Paul's, on the, on the type of grant, always maybe, sometimes it stands up, and it matters. So our, our internal review is whether or not we can support it, meaning, like, if they're, if they want to donate something that our technology just won't be able to do, we, we want to tell them, we don't say whether or not we think that you should do it, we just say whether or not we can, we can support it. And then the foundation has a committee that sits down, and they look at each grant, and they decide which ones they want to fund.
Dr. Paul, would you be able to tell us a little bit about some of the grants that?
I can tell you some.
Yeah, I can tell, I can tell you some, but the one that I've been with two kindergarten teams was the electronic stamp surface, so that's coming up now. Some of these, like the Taekwondo, I, those are more experiential things that come in. I'm not really sure what the break-by brick lay, layout is, but I think that it's similar to our robotics kits that we buy, and I think there's a Lego version of it, where the kids can put the Legos together, and it has what the code according to it. That the students can program their Lego pieces to move and so forth.
And I think that one, if I remember correctly, could they, I sat with the foundation on the way through that, that's got all curriculum on it, too, so. Because there was a lot of questions on, it's a pretty expensive, you know, is it just a bunch of Legos put together, no, there's a lot more to it, and it was pretty intricate. Kenny, I, I, you saw the foundation days on, and sit through much of these meetings, and they go in pretty detailed, and they've got a, a staff member, it's a teacher from Lakeview, Value, and River View, that sit on the foundation board, and they're really there to help understand, promote getting grants from teachers, and also really to help understand, how does this grant fit in, can you find out a little more about it? They come in pretty well prepared to present on behalf of the teacher that put the grant in a lot of times, a little bit more about it, or answer any questions they might have, so. They sit and go through them all, the, the one that is a world dance also, you'll see, Steve, if you, or Sandy, or Demeris, when that comes across on the schedule, if you can add it to your report, it's great.
My son participated in that this year, it was wonderful, yes, he wants, he wants to go to France now, so.
Put a grant, try to. Yeah, it's awesome, so, they've got a, a bunch, and there's going to be more coming, they've kind of revamped, they were, they used to do all the teacher grants in the fall, then they would do the district grant in the spring, they kind of reversed it around a little bit, because they didn't want teachers, if they come up with a great idea in January, oh, I gotta wait till October to submit my grant, so they do a rolling grant process, so if you come up with an idea throughout the year, they can submit for a grant.
Thanks.
Any points?
Call on Paul, please.
Mr. Cass?
No, on check number one one eight five, yes on everything else.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lour?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Seeing nothing under operations, that brings us to good applause. For committee reports, I hope everybody received the committee pre-exam, committee, so now. If anybody has any questions?
I have a comment.
Yeah?
We just had a meeting of the finance and operations committee, so a couple of key things that came out of there, we discussed the St. Mary's initiative, and the Value Field built renovation, and we're going to put together a hand chart with some milestones on it, and have that available online, so people can keep, keep track of where we are on the different steps, and those two, those two projects. In terms of Value, the contractors that are going to bid and spend for the field, on February twenty-fourth, we will make a decision on awarding the contract. There are some caveats with some add alternate parts of the projects, so if the bids are outrageous and exceed our budget, we will have some flexibility doing the site projects, which is retaining the wall, which is in really bad shape if you ever have, have it just falling apart. And that's why you have a lot of erosion of the, the sand, you know, the infill sand just goes right into the street. So they give us a little bit of flexibility, and we also reminded the committee that the township is very generous, they're contributing to half the cost of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Cass, and thank you to everybody for meeting today, for committee reports, came out, you know, the, you guys are hitting the budget hard, so, very much appreciated.
Lour, do we, I don't, I don't think we have to, but I noticed we didn't approve the committee, that's technically.
Yes, she said.
Correct, tell them. Okay. Present, actually. We had, we took off the agenda for the last two, two years, we just did.
Okay. I don't mind for the best, I don't want to.
I agree, that's fine.
Our buy those, don't call for that.
My only question is, do we need to recharge, like, we, last year, we recharged the security, that's a little different, right, if that's an ad hoc. Do we need to re-add again, that's the one? And so, now, yeah, anything that's ad hoc, right?
Yep. You did the, you did the one for the, you did the other two committees, right, we already did the rec committee, that's all, did it go, because you did it for the.
That's for the school year, right?
Okay.
But then, we remember, we do it in September.
Well, we're gonna, yeah.
Okay, that's true.
It's a long term.
Okay.
And the other committee, how many board members are on the transportation?
Two, it's a daughter, no.
I don't think, I don't think it was an official ad hoc committee, I don't think you were, it's just, you just had a committee, we asked all the board members to come in.
So that the only line we need to recharge is security, so what's the process?
We'll put a resolution together, can you get that for the, to second meeting in February?
Any more questions, Paul?
Um, in, at the top, we have different, those six different committees, with three people, and each, there's a technology one, and then the bottom of the list, there's also another.
Technology is listed there, it was.
It's a different committee, that's why.
It's a different committee?
That's our internal, so one to board committee, the other one's an internal committee, that we ask a board member to, be like a liaison.
Call on Paul.
How about highlights, have you, I mean, we've been pretty, have you?
Yeah, we, I think, all the donations that we had were significant, and I think worth noting, in our highlights.
Anything else? There's a list of dates when we cross the board, across the guy, sorry, A A, sir.
As, as one of the highlights, we're going to apologize?
Good, I mean.
Oh, we have it?
It's okay, that's what we want to start doing. The only thing I would say is that we, we have some meetings, we have a lot, yeah, this could just be a short one.
Well, we have screeners, twenty, is that provided?
Yeah.
So you do your work.
Yeah, we'll talk about work, so.
What is today?
Is that good?
Cool.
No, I don't have balance, I just had a word with the boss.
Okay.
So we have donations, from the Value PTA, the Foundation Denville, and Dr. Singer.
Don't forget the names.
I only put that out there because I just felt like I had, and I always search. And you got it right, it was being A's.
I don't think you wore almost a ten years.
That's good.
Are they from A A's town?
Yeah, they've been A's place, yeah.
I was going to say, don't say, don't say no.
I just have a couple of things, New Jersey School Board's legislative officers set up a meeting with Brian Murphy in the Assembly, and so if there's anything, we're going to talk about right now about their funding, obviously, for the housing, if there are any other issues you'd like us to discuss when we sit down with him, we can send him over to me, I'll be great. Oh, and also, I've been asked to speak at M C S T, the Education Learning Academy, as a board member, for their juniors, to explain to them what the board members all about, and the others. So if you have any suggestions about what I should talk about, that will be all, I've got to come up with a little bit of a presentation, so, it's fine.
When do you go?
I go on February tenth.
Nice. That should be, yeah. Thank you.
Make one quick comment, Don, I was really happy to hear that you guys are going to come up with kind of a chart to track St. Mary's, because I think that, that we talked about it early on, that, you know, one of the concerns I had kind of going into this was timeline, obviously, we're, we know how long, unfortunately, projects take, when you go out to bid, and you've got a lot of folks involved. And number two, obviously, cost, we've got a set budget that we want to try to stay within, and obviously, just kind of trying to contain that, make sure that we are appropriately tracking it. So I'm happy to hear that the B and G committee is going to be tracking that, so, if we can get like a snapshot of that as you guys kind of went through your committee, I guess we'll see the committee reports, if you can include that in committee work, just, we don't need details, but on track here, here's two of the things that are kind of, you know, either off the rails, or are, or need to be realigned, or whatever.
Can we get into any, any specific details at the meeting, other than the concept of an I offer to stop by, and meet with our business administrator?
How would you classify?
Can you guys remember, do you remember how when we were doing that, specifically the one that jumps out was the Easton project? Every week, you got, you got an updated report with the plan chart, that's the kind of thing we're going to provide. We should have two different ones, for the fields, two of the archives.
I mean, tag, like I said, and thinking back to when we approved it, there are already so many eyes on us, on that building September first, so, it would be, you know, we're seeing balls many times, and I was, you and I had this discussion last week. If there's any balls we see, really we see, I'm sure there'll be balls, so B and G take that on, and watch that, and we, we do that.
We're already running into one bump already, because we won't be, we won't even be out to bid until the second, we won't, we won't, I mean, the earliest that we're going to possibly approve a contractor is the second meeting in March. So even though we're as ahead, as ahead of the game as we possibly could, second meeting in March will be your first, our first window of opportunity to, to appoint a contractor. And St. Mary's will be using that building for C C A on Sundays and Mondays through April. So there will be some work that they can do during that time, but they really can't do work in the classrooms until March, until day first, so. We have a couple of stoning blocks, and, and those probably aren't good, these things are going to, that'll sidetrack us, the things that'll sidetrack us are any specialty items. The doors, the front doors, when we replace the front doors, the lead time is long. So, you know, getting every single thing done by September first, being optimistic, but being realistic, too, that some of this stuff might carry over, but there won't be any kind of safety issues, or, or security issues, we'll make sure of that.
But basically, we'll have a commitment accomplished, finished by September first, so, I think it moves to December to go.
Yeah, we have to. Yeah, we have to.
Okay, and so the other stuff, like, like angle, I just, you know, it takes a little work, and this will be experienced before this, or other issues.
Yep.
Unfortunately, Mr. Kim's not here, but I did want to break him up for discussion, talking about a demography study, and when it's budget time, so, it is something that we are looking into, either this year, or next year, or whenever we want it to be, we should decide, if we want it in the next coming school year, we should account for it in budget, so, I know that it's a discussion that we have to have, and we've been talking about, you know, we have right now, St. Mary's as a safety, so, everyone's open to discussion, and started about, for when we need to, when we're going to, we should have a demography study, and if that should be in the next budget cycle.
Will you mean next budget cycle, maybe 2021 or 2022?
Uh, maybe.
Right now, we're currently. And, and I shared with you, the Dr. Rip is substantially more, we had, but obviously, product, the finished product is substantially more involved than what we got in the past, but the cost is somewhere above $20,000. I, I don't, the matters, you would have to think about, try to fit that into the budget.
I did have a discussion with Mr. Ken last Friday, he runs to demography, and I considered discussing maybe holding it up to 2022, just because of the timing issue, uh, makes sure it's going to be very tight, but I'm sure I can figure out however, 2022, like, that year, just because we don't have all the information, we're doing developments and developments, how it's going to be next year, and I always go through one year at a time, and still see how it's going to play out, so, we sort of agree that it might be, why are we, maybe even have a so, and putting the budget in place. But I guess the board's decision, you guys have to discuss which, how we want to play it out.
There's no official dates yet, as to when these building projects are in store, right, some are still planning, maybe.
Even if they pull permits, it's really not until they start breaking ground, because it's really. We usually pull permits and never do it.
Yeah.
People have already done that, and that was actually one of the things that happened with one of the current properties, so, although I can tell you, there's a big sign at one of the properties right now that marks the block and lot number. I choose you what happened on that, where they start cutting trees down, I'll let you know when they start marking the trees.
Close to your house?
Yeah. It's a big huge, 10 by 8 sign, it says lot number, lot number, it's pretty big, so. Speaking of that, and just reminded me to bring this up, I had spoken to Mr. Forte, he was last week, about potentially just looking at what properties are potentially available in town to build on, and this was done 10 years ago, and not that I want to spend a lot of money with architects and all that, but just a quick snapshot, I don't, since none of us were really detailed involved on Donald much, or if you know, when they looked at the properties years ago, did they eliminate properties because of potentially a property owner wasn't interested in selling, or whatever, just, and, and the reason why I say this is, I think we can get it pretty quickly, because Jason, I think his name's Jason Kresler, is the town planner, has spent a tremendous amount of time, obviously, with all the CO stuff, on identifying individual properties, as to buildable, non-buildable, and looking at who will move what properties, and all that stuff, so, I asked Mr. Forte if he could talk to the town and get a quick snapshot, and see if there's nothing out there that we're missing for future opportunities, we obviously own the Nicole Drive property, and we know that it's, I guess, I would call it buildable, maybe not perfect, and I don't know if there is going to be a perfect piece of property in town, the town also recently purchased another pretty large piece of property, but I don't know if it's buildable, or if all that, so, just take a quick look at it and see what's out there, not that we're looking to build, but I think it's always good to take a look, and you never know if you go talk to a property owner, and they say, oh, I wasn't interested in selling 10 years ago, but I am now, and, you know, well, we could, this is down the road, but could you pick up a piece of property that we could potentially build on in the future, so, at least worthwhile to kind of take a look at, and, and look at it like a priority or something that we need to, we've got a lot of stuff going on in St. Mary's and everything else, I don't want to detract from that, but just a little look at it.
Yeah, we went out, we were looking for sites to put a middle school on, and there were very few pieces of property that were big enough to site a school on, and one of them is gone now, that was up by Morris Falls, where they're going to be putting those townhouses, so, and, and that had issues too, there was a lot of burn pools there, and spilt issues, so, it's something that they're going to have to deal with, we also looked over there by, across from the firehouse, I think that's Mary Trail, you know, it's, it's a tract of land that runs parallel Diamond Spring Road, and I think they got a path there, a little way to Morris End, and now there, that's a large piece of property, and it's all wet, it's, it's very wet, so, so, that, those two large, you know, tracts that we have looked at in the past, and you have to call it, those are really hot, but it'd be good to check with the, the planner, because obviously, where they're building these developments now, you could have put a school there, but they were privately owned, that the, you know, they didn't come up.
I did, I did discuss with, with Steve Ward, he's going to get back to us, I asked him to tell us all, Matt, Matt, I mean, last time I talked to the architect, it's about 28 years, I've been looking for, so I said, give me any parcel of land, 28 years or above that, and I didn't give him any other grants, even if it's, even if it's not buildable, it's 28 years.
How much property are you doing on Nicole Drive, you know it?
Thirty.
Thirty?
And 20 of it is built.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and I think, I think we're going to constantly be having this discussion, but one of my concerns, long term, is we may have solved a five to six year problem with, with Rurview Annex, but, but for six years from now, the students that are this year kindergarten, and next year kindergarten, are going to Value, and where are we going to put the money into Value, if we've got an extra section, how many more sections are we taking up there, and when do we get to a point of not being able to sustain there, so, I don't want to be thinking about it five to six years from now, I want to start thinking about it earlier, so we can make sure we understand kind of what our options are, so, but, there's a lot of pressing needs, but it's certainly one of the things, I think, long term, not short term, that we need to continue to think about.
Anything else? So, we need to open up the meeting for a second, a couple cons? Eight, 10? And seeing no one in the audience, we can close at eight, 10?
I need for a second.
Thank you.
I move to your side.
All in favor?
Aye.
Speaking's a turn.